Call to order, please. Clerk, would you call roll, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Combs. Mr. Henchy.
Present.
Mr. Luther. Ms. Nelson.
Here.
Ms. Sebacher.
Here.
Ms. Stone.
Here.
Mr. Stone, I'm so sorry. I was looking at Ms. Regaloo.
She got on her roll.
I did. And Mr. Washington. Seven council members present, all in good humor. Thank you.
Okay, everyone stand for the invocation, please.
Let us bow our head and pray as far as your faith shall allow you. Oh gracious God, we're here today to conduct business for the city of Fulton and all its residents. We ask that you be in attendance, Lord, to make sure that we make the best decisions that we can, not just for us, but for the whole city as a whole. May you have blessings upon all the leadership of this city and all those that work for the city, the staff, the emergency responders, everybody, Lord. And these things we ask in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Now we'll have a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first up, we'll have Chief Kofelt. You want to come up and give us some information here?
Kevin Kofelt, Fire Chief. I'm going to ask Kathy Miller to come up with me. I have a special award for her. So Kathy, we responded to a commercial structure fire on April 2nd, and Kathy made our job a lot easier. She grabbed the extinguisher and put the fire out prior to our arrival. So we thought it would be great to honor her with appreciation of what she done. So special recognition from the Fulton Fire Department honoring Kathy Miller for her act of bravery on April 2nd, 2023. Whereas the city of Fulton recognizes and values the heroism and acts of bravery of courage by its citizens. And whereas the Fulton Fire Department was called to a commercial structure fire at Ashbury Heights Residential Care Facility at 11:50 a.m. on April 2nd, 2023. And whereas when the first engine company arrived, there was a report of light smoke coming from the single-story structure. And whereas in further investigation, it was determined that the facility supervisor Kathy Miller utilized a portable fire extinguisher prior to our arrival of the fire department. And whereas without Kathy's quick thinking and proper use of the fire extinguisher, this situation may have ended tragically. And whereas Kathy's brave action saved not only property, but possible loss of life. Now therefore, I, Kevin Kofelt, the Fire Chief, on behalf of the City of Fulton Fire Department and the City Council, recognize and thank you for your act of bravery. And witness wherefore, I have hereunto set my hand and caused to the affixed the official seal of the City of Fulton, Missouri, this 23rd day of May, 2023. And Kathy, here are some of the firefighters that responded to your call. They wanted to come out tonight to honor you.
Thank you.
We really do appreciate the job that you've done. And I just want to give you this. Thank your family.
Kathy, thank you very much. You definitely saved a lot of possible lives and certainly some property, which can be replaced, but the lives are so important. Okay, Chief, do you have anything else? Okay. Next, I want to recognize an old and good friend. And I don't mean old as in age, but for many years. And it's my honor and privilege to introduce State Senior Vice Commander presently, Charles Williams, on his promotion, which will be in June, to the VFW State Commander of Missouri. I think that's a tremendous accomplishment. Charles and I have been, as I said, good friends for many years. We went through several boards together. And so worked closely together and became good friends over the years and certainly is today. So that being said... I don't have a plaque or anything at this point, but I want to shake your hand.
I want to thank the mayor and the city council, city administrator, and just the citizens of Fulton altogether. I just want to thank you for this honor. It was unexpected. You know, I don't like to brag and I don't like to tell people things. Then this is what I do. And if anybody escalated from there, hey, that's on them. So I thank you for this moment, Mayor. I thank you also for this moment to talk about some veterans issues. First, I want to tell you about the organization itself when it first started. VFW traces roots back to 1899, when veterans of the Spanish-American War and the Philippine Insurrection formed the local organization, the System of Securing Medical Care and Other Benefits. Some of the groups banded together in 1914. They formed the VFW, which received a congressional charter in 1936. From the beginning, the organization limited membership to officers and enlisted men, and then later women, honorably discharged from the military who have served in any foreign war, insurrection, or expedition in the service of the United States. And that still holds true to today. The major original purpose of the VFW was to promote comradeship among its members, to perpetuate the memory of the dead, and to assist the widows and orphans of veterans. So you know how Memorial Day coming up is very dear and important to us. In 1925, the organization established a national home for veterans orphans. We have homes up in Lansing, Michigan, where veterans, family members, who get discharged or they were killed in action and their families have no place to go. The VFW has two homes up in Lansing, Michigan. They go there for four years. They live there for free. We provide everything for them. They go to school. They do whatever they want. We take care of their kids. And after four years, most of the time, either the wife or the husband or both have their degrees and they go on about their lives from there. So that was something, that's a big win for us, and we've been doing that for a long time. The VFW has a lot of programs for veterans. And a lot of veterans don't realize that. We still, we have over 400,000 veterans in the state of Missouri. And so far, I think we might have just touched maybe close to 100,000. So there's 300,000 still out there that do not know that they have benefits and compensation coming to them. So we like to get out there and we advocate through Buddy Poppy's, as you see us out there in Walmart, different things with the little red buds. We thank you for those donations because they go a long way. They go to help pay bills for veterans in the city of Fulton or any other needs that the veteran may have or their family members. And if the veteran or a family member are not in need, we also help community, do community service with their money and help somebody in the community also. Last year, our veteran service officers, these are paid veterans and some civilian employees, that gets the veterans their bills. They are certified through the VFW by the VA, and they fill out the claims for the veterans. Last year, there was $1 billion in compensation that those veterans did for the state of Missouri. And that's a combination of the VFW, the DAV, Legion, AmVets, and the Veterans Commission. Out of that $1 billion that was raised last, that got compensations for those veterans last year, the VFW did 400 million of that. 400 million, our VSOs. Our veteran service officers are the top-notch veteran service officers in the United States and overseas. And that's not hyperbole. They are. They are sought out by other states and overseas posts and constituents on how to fill out the claims right, so when they go to the VA, they don't get rejected. They get approved on the first time they go through. So I'm very proud to be stepping up as the State Commander with those type of people behind me that are getting our veterans and their families what they deserve. One of the biggest things that the VFW did this past year, and you know, it was all on the news. It was called the PAC Act, which is dealing with toxic exposure for our veterans that was in the Gulf War and beyond. It was hard to get that done. The only way we got it done is because we're the only veteran organization that has a congressional charter. Our commanding chief, and that's who they're called, goes before Congress and lobbies for these bills. And hopefully, they get passed. Well, this PAC Act has been a bill that has been long in coming for many a years, many a years. And we got it done through the VFW. So now, those veterans that are having these symptoms that are caused by the toxic exposure from the burn pits and other things that they were doing in the different countries and services to our country, now they are able to get the benefits that they need and their families as well. So we are really working overtime with our VSOs here in the VFW in the state of Missouri. There's other good things coming down the pipe that I cannot talk about because it has not been approved yet. But it's approved, you know how it is, it's approved, but it's not approved. So you really can't talk about it until it's actually put in writing. But some other things come down the pipe for our veterans. And I'm proud of that too, because all this good stuff is happening in my ear, in my ear. So I'm working hard. I believe in the city of Fulton. That's why I volunteer for so many boards. It's amazing how I survive this stuff. And I will make you proud. Thank you.
Commander Williams is a 20-year Air Force retiree and veteran of Operation Enduring Freedom in Iraqi Freedom and a lifelong member of VFW Post 2657. We thank you very much for everything that you do for Fulton and now for the state.
Again, I want to say how proud I am of you for serving in this capacity. But also some things that you didn't cover that I think are important. And I think you told me there was 168 posts in the state of Missouri that you will be over. But more important than that, those that you don't know, Charles is the first African-American to get this post in the state of Missouri. So again, we're proud of you, and I know you'll do Fulton very proud. Thank you. Next, we'll have comments from visitors. Do we have any visitors? Seeing none. Approval of the consent agenda, we don't have one tonight. Presentation and acceptance of the DOA report. Do we have any questions on that? Seeing none, do I hear a motion to approve?
Move to approve the Director of Administration report as presented.
Thank you.
Do we have some questions, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
First one is page three. So it looks like we found some critical malware.
Critical malware found. Is there any concerns with the continued or further infection, I guess, throughout the city system? Or is there any training needed on that critical malware?
Thank you, Councilman Luther, for your question. There is ongoing concern. It is not, we are having, we have training, we have staff training. We're sending out fake emails to, you know, see if people are clicking on them, and we're teaching them that. But the issue more so is that we do not have the defenses to fight this. This will be something that we are examining for our capital improvement budget. Fulton, like every other city in the United States, we are constantly being attacked. I believe our critical malware attacks have escalated into the tens of thousands at this point. Our IT department is working very hard to stay in front of it. But this is part of cybersecurity, and it also substantiates the need for tools and resources to not only train, but to build in defense mechanisms. So we're working on it. I have to say the staff is doing a really good job. There have been a couple of instances where we had infections.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Next question, time to work the course. Software issues, any concern with the loss of irrigation around some of the time of class?
Clay Caswell, Director of Parks and Rec. No, we're having a little bit, the system's working. It's putting water on the course. It's just a matter of fine tuning it and getting the software to work like we want to. The company's been looking into it. And as of late last week, I think it's getting better. So there's no concern about not getting water to the course.
Excellent. I know other courses have seen such, quote, disasters occur.
Yeah. I think we're safe for now.
Ms. Tyler, in terms of the All-American City visit, is there anything that you need from anybody at this time to prepare you for the, is it June 4th? Is that the visit date?
No, and thank you for asking that, sir. I appreciate that. I was actually prepared to give a little bit of an update of where we are. We ask that everyone supports us to date. And as I have tried to keep council abreast, we actually started receiving donations last week. So we're in the second week of donations. As of today, we have $6,250 in hand with an additional commitment of $7,500, and that's $13,750. We also are waiting, we've spoken, and I don't, people are asking me not to say, you know, their names and such. But we have several donors that we've met with, which you all have been updated in the last week's weekly report. People are making commitments. We're just now waiting for them to let us know how much they're committing. And we plan to pick up, you know, we hope to have all the checks by June 7th. In addition, we have some upcoming events. One is the Fire Department is hosting a boot drive, and that will be June 2nd, 3rd, and 4th. They're going to be out collecting for supporting the All-American Cities. June 7th, Bex is allowing us to host a silent auction as well as a celebrity bartending event. I will be bartending for two hours, and you all are encouraged to come out. And I know some of us don't drink, but I will serve you a soda. I'm working for tips, so, you know, we're again asking for people to come out. We also have some ongoing coin drives. And I'll just go over those really quickly. United Credit Union, Jamolli's, The Spot. And then Gopo has, Gopo has a hornet stripe popcorn, where all proceeds from sales of that popcorn will go towards All-American Cities. So, and I still have several meetings. I also would like to thank the mayor. He set up the radio interview last Friday. Got a lot of feedback, and hopefully, we get traction from that. We also have another interview that was set up that's coming on Thursday. Now, I apologize, it's somebody in Jeff City. I also want to give a little bit of a shout out. The chamber has been great. Tamara Tetejan has been working with us on the pitch competition. Renee Graham has procured some great pieces for the silent auction. We will be working on filming all the pieces and putting them on our website and asking all of our collaborators to share, so people can get an update of what we're going to be hosting at Bex. So what we ask for is everyone that's listening, your support, whether it's a dollar, you know, quarter, whatever. Everything is appreciated, and it's all going to a great cause for the community.
What's our goal on that?
30,000.
Thank you.
And I think we're going to get it.
Any other questions or concerns about the DOA report?
Will you send those, all those dates to us?
We do what?
I'm going to. What I'm, I have, I'm actually, depending upon what time we get done, I'm going to go to Bex tonight because I just want to iron out. We talked about it, the hours. So I will make sure the council is aware. You're welcome.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Very good. Next, we'll have the financial report. Lynn, please.
Lynn Boswell, Interim CFO. Good evening, Mayor, council members. The city of Fulton recorded three months of sales tax in 2023. Collections are up 6% from fiscal year 2022. Use tax is down 13.7% from fiscal year 2022. Also, there are two payroll cycles in April. A payroll cycle consists of two weeks. I stand for any questions.
Just on the use tax, can you remind me what all the things in the back? Maybe any thoughts of why they're maybe down compared to last year?
The use tax has come in from your community here in the businesses and filtered through the state. At this time, I don't have a reason for the decrease other than there's just currently less use. I'm anticipating that it should be back on track perhaps later on in the year. And not sure if the economy and what people are spending has anything to do with those.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, Lynn. Okay, do I hear a motion to accept? Did you get that, Kathy?
I did. Thank you.
Very good. All right, no further questions. I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Next, we have some unfinished business. Is that going to be you or Kyle? Explain that, or do you want to explain that? We have the roof update on the firehouse number two.
Kevin Kofelt, Fire Chief. Yes, the project is now completed. They were, actually Jeremy Polston, he helped a lot with this. He followed it, kept a good eye on it as it was going on. And it looks like they, looked to me like they put a new membrane down. They cleaned it first, put a new membrane down and sealed it good. We haven't had a whole lot of rain since, but the rains that we have, we've been dry. Before that, we had several leaks on that side. So it does have a 10-year workmanship warranty. You know, it won't cover the wear and tear, but anything that's a workmanship problem, they'll come back and fix. We was impressed with the company that came in and did it.
Excuse me, Chief, would you mind sharing with the council how much money we saved?
Yeah, that was the best part about it. We was under budget on it. I think we came in 3,000, was it 3,000, less than we expected. So that was a good thing.
Anyone have any questions, Chief Kofelt? Okay, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
We'll move on to new business, which we don't have any at this time. Council concerns. Councilman Henchy. Councilwoman Sebacher.
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 Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do, we actually don't have, I don't have an update on the park board. There's a lot of feedback. You guys hearing that? I'm going to step back a little. Is that better? But I did want to bring up, I was walking on Wood Street and noticed that there are a lot of trees in Veterans Park across from Bush School that appear to be dead. They need to be either addressed or removed. I counted roughly four to five, some that had half-life in them, but a lot that were just completely gone. So I wanted to see if we could make it a point to go out there and take a look at those. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. She brought that to my attention, and I drove by there. There are one or two of them that are dead, hanging over the sidewalk that could be a little dangerous, so we'll need to get those taken care of. Mary is still out. Councilman Stone, do you have anything?
Yes, the Historic Preservation Commission postponed their meeting from last week to June 7th due to the air conditioning issues that were going on in the building last week. And I did want to acknowledge Nancy Lewis is stepping away from the commission, and she's served on the Historic Preservation Commission for five years. We were checking on it because I thought she'd been involved for a lot longer than that on the commission. But it's probably just the blurring of everything that Nancy Lewis has done in this community over the last many years. So I just want to thank her for her service to the commission. And then I noticed in the Director of Administration report that we are still moving forward with the legal review with the owners of the property by Second Street and Ravine for the wall. So I just want to share my appreciation for that project to continue. No need for a comment. Just thank you very much for being diligent with that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Luther?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. As far as Airport Advisory Board updates, Kyle offered to help me with that update since I was not at the last meeting.
Kyle Brimmer, City Engineer. Yes, at the last Airport Advisory Board meeting, we discussed the low bid for the re-lighting of Runway 1836. Meyer Electric was the low bidder at just over a million dollars. We also discussed some COVID relief funding that we submitted for reimbursement on, thanks to Lynn Candy for... thanks to Lynn Candy for doing the doing the paperwork on that. Those are both grants that that you all approved in the past and that that we submitted submitted fuel expenses and whatnot on. So it was about $45,000 worth of worth of dollars COVID relief funding from two different grants. Other than that, that's about it. Any questions?
Okay, also appreciation Kyle and you and the team for the Rose Department for the two drivers on the Sixth Street Bridge. Also seeing the progress starting on the 64 project. Obviously some progress on Cleveland Street and water. I think it was so, and you all there. It's only good on us though, I'm sure, so appreciate all of your support.
Kyle, I didn't, I was trying to catch it before you. I was trying to catch it before you. But that's a C. Can you give us a latest report on that? And how 2,000?
Latest is is we're still working with Mid-Missouri Regional Planning Commission and the state to get the cultural clearance to be able to to move forward on that that grant. Currently, it's being held up under tribal review. So there's some cultural clearances that that just have to be done. We think from talking with Mid-Missouri Regional Planning Commission, a gentleman named Lincoln Brown over there, he he believes that his discussions, through his discussions with the state, that in the next next couple of months, it'll probably still probably take a couple of months to get that done. But so unfortunately, it's taking a longer process than we than we would like.
Kyle, I have a question too about the old warehouse, the progress on that.
Right, the old the old warehouse. The old warehouse, we've we are working with DNR's Brownfield Section and EPA along with along with an organization that's kind of run out of Kansas State University called Technical Assistance to Brownfields. And they are all helping us kind of come up with with a market analysis of that site. So the EPA is actually funding a market analysis for that site. DNR is is performing the environmental review of that site. So it'll it'll take a a few phase process on that environmental review that that DNR is doing. And they're doing that at no cost, at no cost to us. So they're working with us great in that regard. EPA is has worked with us. Melissa's been really, really good, our our grants analyst. Has been working, working hand in hand with them. And so EPA is gonna do that market analysis, which should be at no cost to us, which is another great thing. And then and then that Kansas State Technical Assistance to Brownfields, they will they will help us with our community outreach and kind of what what the community would like that site to look like and all the different alternatives based upon what the market analysis shows and and along with the environmental review and what can and can't be done. You know, given, given those items, so yeah.
Thank you, Kyle. Councilman Colmes?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Human Rights Commission did meet, I think twice maybe now since I've been here. I apologize for missing a couple of meetings. It's pretty heavy in planning for the Juneteenth celebration right now. That's gonna be June 17th over at the Legends. The overall agenda has been finalized for the most part. Right now, we're just looking for food truck vendors. Last I heard, we had one or two that had said they'd be willing to come join us this year. Or last year, I think we had close to eight. So that that changes things a little bit if we don't get some of those rolling in. Most of that has to do with prior commitments being elsewhere and just not a lot amount of interest. And then I just bringing it up, I did sit in on the the Plan and Zoning Commission meeting we just had. And the property over off Tennyson got divided up into three segments. And two of those will be coming back to us, I guess, next time likely for a look at. And that's all I have this time.
Thank you, Councilman. I might remind all of the council that all of our meetings are open and any of the boards or commission meetings you'd like to attend, please, please do. I know you can't get to all of them as I can't either, but I try to go as many as I can. So I'd encourage you to try to to attend those. Councilman Washington?
None. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, none at this time, since Kyle answered the one that I need.
Councilman Woman Nelson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I did have somebody reach out to me regarding some foul. Kyle, I don't know if this is you or not. They stated that there was a home that was directly next to the liquor shop and in front of the car wash that appears to have been abandoned about two months ago. And the homeowner left a rooster and some guineas. And since they have gotten out multiple times and they're worried about the animals. So I don't know who we need to get with to address that.
Ms. Barnes, Animal Shelter, the animal shelter.
Okay.
So Chief Latwick can can take that and pass it on to her.
Okay, thank you so much. They were more concerned about the safety of the animals in that situation because it did appear as though the home had been abandoned. So a real foul situation. The utility board did meet. Unfortunately, there was not a quorum, so we weren't able, we weren't able to vote on anything. But within that meeting, Darrell did give us an update on the water tower. That project is underway. I do think that there have been a couple of bumps in the road. We don't really know to what extent yet that is or what financial impact that's going to have. It was just discovered this week. So just wanted to make everybody aware of that, but that project is underway. And then at our last meeting, we had talked about Sikeston. We had talked about if the price of megawatts were under $70, we were going to buy Sikeston out of that. That was the case, $10, I believe, is the price on that. So we did end up making that move. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
No, I was I was asking the councilwoman, did you want Mr. Dunlap to elaborate? You did a really great job.
I believe that there was some detail in the DOA report. So if anybody has any questions?
Dunlap Utilities, the water tank, the ground storage tank by Ford, we did hit some bumps in the road. And if I missed something, Mr. Brimmer, you can walk up here. The contractor is in town. They did, we did empty the tank, we drained the tank. But we found some more structural issues with the tank. One of them is the ladder, which is probably gonna be the cheapest part. The other one is there's like a 12-inch water line that runs across the whole bottom of the tank inside. It's the fill line. It's full of holes ranging up to you can almost stick your fist through some of them. The the main concern though is the roof. There's a large circle plate that's at the top of the dome. It's, I don't know, it's probably six feet around. All the rafters tie into it, all the steel girders. That's also where the vent is. And as you all know, we chlorinate our water here. So that chlorine gas, as it dissipates out of the water vents do that. We knew the vent itself wasn't in good shape, but the rafters are not either. They have deteriorated, probably have to replace your last email six foot of each one of them. And that is one thing I think we could be happy about. We did hire a tank inspector because this tank's been there since the early 60s and we want another 50 years out of this tank. So we will make sure these repairs are done correctly. On the downside is this was what Kyle and I thought was the good tank. The elevated tank, I'm sure we will find some surprises in it. They didn't notice the rafters and so they started cleaning and then starting to sandblaste the area. And then it just, there's just not much left of the rafters for that first six foot. So they're devising a way now and getting Kyle a change order to see what the price is is gonna be. So did that get most of it, Kyle?
Got it.
Okay.
Thank you, Darrell.
Thank you. Okay, I don't really have anything tonight. That being said, let's move on to resolutions. Resolution number 3494. Councilman Colmes, will you read that for us?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number 3494, Fire Department Grant. A resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri to sign all necessary documents in relation to the Hero Fund America Fund Grant to assist in the purchase of training equipment for the city of Fulton Fire Department. I make a motion to approve Resolution number 3494 at this meeting.
Second.
Thank you. This is an excellent training tool, especially for the young firemen that haven't been in a smoke situation. I know I've been there and it's a, it's quite scary when you can't tell up from down. And sometimes you get disoriented. Chief, you want to tell us a little about that?
Oh, yes, it lowers the visibility quite a bit. This machine here is gonna really lower it. It's gonna, you know, create the best thing we can to a real live situation. We don't have a anything we can burn in right now, but we lowered the visibility and we go in and we do search, rescue and find the victims, bring them out. We'll also use this with the colleges when we do fire drills. We'll be able to help them smoke the buildings up and kind of make a fire drill actually a real incident and make sure they're getting out. And we'll use it throughout the community and other places as well for training, for educational reasons.
Speaking of that, have you ever reached out to South Calway or other companies that burn buildings?
Yeah, actually, right now, we we currently do, we go to Holt Summit. They have a burn building there. And we try to go down at least quarterly and get our people a little bit of live fire burning through their and their facilities. Yeah, they've been really, they welcomed us and been really good to work with.
Thank you, Chief.
I do have something on the actual resolution. It does say Mayor Lau Canell. So I just wanted to make sure that we note that that's fixed.
Yes, it's been corrected. I've already pointed that out to the mayor.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, I have the I had in front of me. Kathy gave it to me. We we do have that correct. Okay, seeing no other questions, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of Resolution 3494? Please say yes.
Yes.
All oppose? Motion carried, thank you. That'll be a very important tool for a fire department. Now Resolution 3495. Councilman Luther, you want to read that for us?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number 3495, Electric Vehicle Charging Stations Grant. A resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri to sign all necessary documents in relation to the charging and fueling infrastructure discretionary grant application to assist in the purchase of electric vehicle charging stations. I make a motion to adopt Resolution number 3495 at this council meeting.
Very good, thank you. I'm gonna have our director discuss that a little bit, maybe even Darrell also. This is a great collaboration between us, Westminster and William Woods. I think it will be beneficial to the entire community. Director, you want to?
Thank you, Mayor. As stated, this is a collaborative effort. Actually, it dates back to last year. Westminster came to the city to discuss opportunities for grants. And we all started talking about electric charging stations. We also spoke with William Woods. And while we know that we don't have an abundance of electric cars, the purpose of this grant is to establish the infrastructure that's necessary. So it's the chicken or the egg which comes first. We do have a growing number of of EVs that are in the city. And what our data has shown to us is that across the country, one of the best areas to grow EV charging stations is colleges and university campuses. Because more more often than not, those are the people that are driving electric cars. So as outlined on the attached memo, we are projecting four chargers for Westminster, four chargers for William Woods. One, two are fast chargers, two are moderate chargers. They have identified where they would like to place them. And then we have three that we would look at placing around the city. Ideally, in we have, we've looked at some areas that are over by the gas station. We have owned some property over by the gas station next to Mojo's and the Baymont, which is right off the highway, that would be ideal. And to be honest with you all, we are still looking. Just to continue to try to identify where would be the best place. The other thing that needs to be noted is that this the city would have the ability to put in, utilize sweat equity as its grant match. We are not only going to be laying infrastructure, we'll be providing resources and labor. So that will be written into the grant and it will lessen the $30,000 match that's listed here. Am I missing anything? Okay. Are there any, any questions?
Yes, I have a question on the placement from William Woods and Westminster, where you said these, they have suggested the places where they will be located. Will they have access for the public to use? Where they have these set up? Will you have that idea?
Well, it's an open campus, so they absolutely, but these, they're paying for them out of their funds. So they're they're fund match. So again, as a, we as the city are not dictating where either the college or the university places its chargers. We've discussed with them and we've asked them to identify where they feel would be the most, the higher volume of traffic. I think one charging station is in, for Westminster, one charging station is in one of the parking lots. Another is near student housing. And the third, I believe, is over in the circle. So all that's subject to change. They they definitely know what they want. And as we work towards this, we will continue working with them to provide any data that they might ask from us to determine if this is where the final placement is going to be.
Yes, the reason why I was asking, William Woods, some of their parks on their campuses closed off with gates. And and if one, and one interest is open. And I was just wondering if it's gonna be located in that area.
Did I understand correctly that we, like, it says 30,000 out of pocket for us, basically? But there's a chance like that could be lessened based on sweat equity, basically?
We will lessen it.
Okay.
Because that's how we're gonna, we're gonna write the grant. That's the good thing. Because that was one of my first questions. Yeah, I always talk, I I've met with people around the state and we discussed the fact that many state, many cities are grant match poor. So in this particular grant, we can put in kind services and that type of thing that will count towards our portion. And the fact is, the services that we're putting in are high labor, high dollar labor. So I, our, our team has pretty much assured me that we can lessen that to probably zero. The other thing also, and I didn't mention this, we are, we're forced to go to The other thing also, and I didn't mention this, we are, we're forced to go to write the grant for $625,000, because that's the less, that's the least amount, however, there's language in the grant that states it needs to be scalable, but it's not us that will be doing the scaling down, it will be the government entity that is awarding the grant, so we're prepared for that, too, so.
Ms. Tyler, are you imagining that more of the labor will be done by, by city folks, as, you know, that the grant will fund that labor that we're going to provide?
Yes, that's include, if you go, it is, but I think that, and then there's the labor that's on top of that, that we can write up, that would amount to our, because I'm always expecting some type of contingency. The bottom line is, the city will not, I don't expect the city to pay $30,000, and we're not, you know, we're not expecting, we're not going to be, we're not going to be hosting more money than this, and, and our staff is working to make sure that, that number is lessened.
No, I was, I was imagining the, the labor that the city staff would provide above and beyond that, that would actually be funded from the grant? Or are we looking to contract most of this work out?
No, we're not contracting it out, because one of the things that we're looking at doing, we will service the charger, as well as sell the electricity.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, let's vote on Resolution 3495. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Resolution 3495 passes. Okay, we'll move to ordinances, these are second reading. Councilwoman Nelson, will you read Bill number 1678, the second time, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Bill number 1678, Callaway County Tax Collection Agreement, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and the city clerk on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to a contract with the collector and county commissioners of Callaway County, Missouri, relating to the collections of taxes with a contract period commencing upon approval through June 2027. I make a motion, we do third and final reading at tonight's council meeting, a bill number 1678.
Do I hear a second?
Valerie, she did.
Okay. If there's any questions, we'll try to entertain those, this is pretty cut and dried, I think. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, Councilwoman, you read it a third time, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Bill number 1678, Callaway County Tax Collection Agreement, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and the city clerk on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to a contract with the collector and the county commissioners of Callaway County, Missouri, relating to the collections of taxes with a contract period commencing upon approval through June 2027. I make a motion, we pass Bill number 1678 at tonight's council meeting.
Second.
Okay, the motion has been made in second for third reading, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Clerk, will you call and roll, please?
Yes, sir, thank you. Mr. Henji?
Madam Clerk, just one moment, before we do the final roll.
Sure.
I have Bill number 1677 in my packet, but it's not listed on the agenda, it would have gone before the current bill.
1677 was moved to third reading last week, it's on, regarding the accepting of donations, gifts, and sponsorships.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Was there something else, Mr. Stone?
No, that was two.
Mr. Henji?
Aye.
Mr. Luther?
Yes.
Ms. Nelson?
Yes.
Miss clue is out, Mr. Seibacher? No, Ms. Seibacher, I am so tired. Ms. Seibacher?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mr. Combs?
Yes.
All members.
I'm Seibacher.
It's okay, thank you. Seven members affirmative.
Okay, very well, thank you. We're going to get this right before the night's over, right? But she answers, so, yeah.
I do, yes.
Councilman Stone, would you be, read Bill 1679 for us, please, tonight?
Bill number 1679, an ordinance renaming a portion of East 13th Street to Ovid Bell Street, and establishing an effective date. I make a motion to move Bill number 1679 for third reading at tonight's meeting.
Very well, we discussed this last time as well. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Would you read it for the third time, sir?
Bill number 1679, an ordinance renaming a portion of East 13th Street to Ovid Bell Street, and establishing an effective date. I make a motion that we move Bill number 1679 for final reading tonight.
Second.
All approval tonight.
Very well. All in favor? Aye, please.
Aye.
Oppose? Clerk, would you do the voice?
Yes, I will do it right this time. Mr. Luther?
Yes.
Ms. Nelson?
Yes.
Ms. Seibacher?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mr. Combs?
Yes.
Mr. Henji?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, seven councilmembers affirmative. Thank you. Mary has to come back, it throws me off.
Very well, and thank you. Now we come to Bill number 1677. Councilwoman Nelson, would you read that one also, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Bill number 1677, the accepting of donations, gifts, and sponsorships, an ordinance amending Chapter Two, Administration, Article Six, Finances, Purchasing, and Bid Procedures of the Fulton City Code, by adding Section 2-371 through 2-375, an accepting of donations, gifts, and sponsorships, and establishing an effective date, and make a motion for final passage of Bill number 1677 at tonight's council meeting.
Second.
Very well, thank you. Does anyone have any questions? I know we discussed this a little bit earlier. Seeing none, all in favor of Bill 1677, please say aye.
Aye.
Madam Clerk, would you read the voice, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Ms. Nelson?
Yes.
Ms. Seibacher?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mr. Combs?
Yes.
Mr. Henji?
Yes.
Mr. Luther?
Yes.
Seven in favor, affirmative.
Very well, thank you. Announcements, the next council meeting will be the June 13th. At that time, we're, one thing that we've determined, that our Planning and Zoning Board possibly hasn't been, been appointed correctly. Like all the boards, the mayor makes an appointment, the council approves or disapproves, but this goes one step further, and this is the only bill aboard, we found that, correct me if I'm wrong, Kathy, the council picks from within the council a person to represent the council on that board.
Yes.
So, am I correct in saying all of that?
Yes.
But we haven't been doing that.
He was saying that the Planning and Zoning Commission, the council member for that commission is actually selected by the other members of the council.
So...
Yes.
I think we probably need to take care of that, and that'll be on the agenda next time. It'll be up to you all, who you want to, to represent the council on that, on the planning and zoning. I think everybody knows who we want on there, I think, and my recommendation would certainly be Councilman Combs, but it'll be up to you all, whoever you want to put on.
You know, our, our practice has always been to discuss amongst ourselves, who, who wishes to serve on certain boards and commissions, and who's available, and, and who has the interest in the, in the commitment, so, and that's our, our practice for all of the councils and commissions and boards, the appointment.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Do we have anything else that needs to come before us tonight? Seeing none, I'll have, I'll entertain a, a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We got it, thank you.